We have a motion to return to regular session.
Some movement, Chair.
Thank you. A second? David, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certification to closed session pursuant to subsection two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty. As amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board Supervisors. Any member of the Board Supervisors who believes there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure and is or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believes a departure has taken place? Being none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Oris Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Di. Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Right, let us stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please. Thank you to the Lord for giving us another day. Thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon each one of us, our families, friends, and our fellow people in the Russell County. Please give us the strength and wisdom to do and guide our decisions that we may put your love first, our friends, our family, and our fellow citizens. Surround us with all walks of life, all backgrounds. Help us to do what is best for our folks in this county. Bring us together in high moral character. Help us to be the best that we can be. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Our, um, first business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, thank you Carl. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Steve. Owen?
Madam Chair, I need to make an amendment to the agenda. Is this where I do that? I'm sorry. Okay, um, I'd like to amend the agenda to ask for a letter of support for the C Prop application that was submitted on March the twenty third for the Destination Center, please.
Amend the agenda?
Please.
Alright, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have to, we're gonna have to rescind our first one?
I'll withdraw my second to peanut's motion.
Alright, so she has her second, so we can go ahead with that. Alright, Oris, your second, so we will accept her amendment and approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you want to oppose? Lou, where would you like to?
Uh, and I'm, I apologize again for not taking care of that earlier. Um, I'll ask that, uh, we put it under, um, I guess, under, um, the County Administrator Report, please.
Alright, at this time then, we'll open up the floor for public comment on the VDOT Secondary Year Plan for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two to twenty six, twenty seven. So, any comment on the VDOT Secondary Year Pl- Sixth Year Plan? So, would you like to make any comments about your Sixth Year Plan? Seeing, seeing no one has any comments on the Sixth Year Plan? We'll close that. The second thing on public, uh, hearing is that we have our Russell County Cigarette Tax Ordinance. Any public comments on that? Yes, Oris, step right there.
My name's Sean Vance, I live in District One. Um, I've read through this, I got this, the day I read through this, I should've took more time, I'm sure. The taxes, I'm putting both kinda together, the cigarette and the meal tax. I understand that the county needs money to run one, but, you know, we are coming out of a pandemic. Is this the best way to go? Seems like the only person that's really paying the price is the small business. I mean, if you look at the exemptions on the one, if you're a church, or government, or anything to do with the county, or anything like that, everything's exempt. So, the guys who are collecting all the money and responsible for collecting the money would be the small businesses. If I am incorrect on that, somebody can say. Either or. Well, yeah, more the food tax than anything else. I mean, keeping records for up to two years? I mean, this guy's running the whole business, now you expect him to keep records for two years? And then, the penalties if he makes a mistake? Am I reading the wrong thing?
Cigarette tax?
Well, I'm on the food ordinance. I'm kinda putting them both together because it was no use me standing up twice. You know, I mean, if you look through some of the exemptions and so forth, so on, but if you get into the part where the, you know, um, payments and collections and all that kinda stuff, I mean, you should know this. I mean, am I looking at this the wrong way, or is this, are you all looking at the same way I am? I mean, if, you know, you have a guy running a small business coming out of a pandemic and now he's just to keep records for all this stuff? Up to two years? And everything else? Are we underneath the ideal that we're going to collect the taxes from people passing through Virginia? And if that's so, you know, not through Virginia, from county to county? You know, you come from Wise County going to Abington or Washington County and you're figuring we're getting their money? But where's the reporter, the, somebody did a report to study that? Or is somebody just come up that, that's what we're all thinking? And where people from Wise County comes through?
Madam Chair, may I attempt to answer?
Sure you can.
Mr. Vance's question.
It's my time.
Um, concerning your question, as a business owner and a taxpayer?
Alright.
Um, I mean, I pay Virginia tax, I collect Virginia sales tax, and I pay it back to Virginia.
Right.
There's also a form there that is for your meals tax.
Right.
And so, when you audit, when you start filling out your form as a business person, that form allows you to plug in those numbers and you pay it back to the state. So, the state has already got all that set up. It will pull off localities tax also. So, when you plug in your county, it pulls off the certain percent to come back into your, uh, meals tax. Now, I think that, will the state taxes go through that also, or is that a separate thing that we have to do as far as the county goes?
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. Okay, the cigarette tax and the meal tax is a local tax. Now, the record keeping component is, they're already keeping records for this, for this state reporting.
Yes.
This is just a different reporting to the county and the state. It has to be, the state already requires it by law.
So, to answer his question though, doesn't that, does that locality, doesn't that go back through the state and come back to you? Or does it come separately?
It comes back directly to the county.
Yes, but does it go through the state first?
No.
It comes through the county?
It comes through the county.
So, there's a reporting on that certificate when you report food and, and sales tax? Is what I'm thinking. You're gonna have the same reporting that I have to do as a business person if I'm selling goods and services and food.
I understand that, I guess, to a certain point, but it still don't, the way I read it, it seems like you're putting a lot of the burden on to the business person. So, as a business person, as you said four times, you want that responsibility?
I already have that responsibility. Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Right? Well, now these people are gonna be pushed upon to do it, right? No? Am I looking at this the wrong way? Anybody?
Do you run a business that this will be affected on?
My family does, and what does that have to do if I run the business or not? I mean, I don't think I-
I'm just curious.
And I'm not figuring that, I'm agreeing with this, is what I'm saying.
I understand.
What difference if I make a run of business or not? Especially what business of yours?
Alright, are there any more comments? On the cigarette tax? Go ahead.
Alright, Jennifer Trumbly, just cigarette tax. I have not had the pleasure to read that, um, unfortunately. I just, I just wanted to know if it had vapor products in it first. And, I, I'm not opposed to that. I just, uh, the only thing I was gonna say, if, if it did, you know, we just got a six point six increase, that's like seven, eight dollars onto a bottle. So, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. If we do wanna do a vapor tax going forward, there are, it's not as simple and cut and dry as cigarettes, you know, because there's different milliliters, different nicotine levels, so it would be a little more in depth. But since it doesn't, then I will rescind my comment for that. Thank you, guys.
One, I know it's a public comment, but my understanding at this time, it is simply tobacco products, correct? Cigarettes, cigarettes.
Paper products are considered tobacco products, they carry that same licensing currently. But it just so happened this year that we went into effect that we got a six point six state percent, six point six cents on each milliliter from the state. So, it would be in addition to that, so I just wanted to make sure that if there was one, how that would lay out? Would it be per bottle? Because, you know, people get different sized bottles, so that may be something you guys wanna look at in the future and we can talk. Thank you.
Alright, any other folks on the cigarette tax ordinance? Yes, step forward.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Keith. I am the Secretary of the Russell County Prevention Coalition and a prevention technician with Cumberland Mountain Community Services. Many of you are familiar with the Russell County Prevention Coalition. We have been around since twenty fourteen. Uh, we are a broad group of local stakeholders spanning twelve different sectors of the community with the aim of reducing substance abuse, especially among youth. One of our primary objectives has been reducing the use of tobacco products by youth. Um, as part of this, we formed the We Don't Support Underage Use Campaign that you've seen on a lot of billboards, school buses, cars, all over the place. We also conduct annual tobacco retailer education visits. And we do science-based prevention education curriculums in our school system. Uh, we would like to put forth our support for the cigarette tax ordinance as it's presented. Um, in your packet, you've got some information from the National Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. Uh, this includes a lot of studies and evidence about how increasing the price of cigarettes can work very well, one of the most effective tools that we have, to reduce the use rates of cigarettes among kids, as well as adults. So, they refer to it as a win-win-win, as far as for health, for budget, increasing much-needed local revenue, and then also politically as the vast majority of people support a cigarette tax. Uh, until last year, Virginia had the lowest tobacco excise tax in the nation. We were fifty out of fifty at thirty cents a pack. Last year, the state doubled that tax from thirty cents to sixty cents, and Virginia still ranks as the forty-fourth highest, still among the lowest in the nation. So, I was very glad to see that you assembled the local ordinance, uh, tax rates for cigarettes. That again shows that, um, a lot of localities in the region already have a cigarette tax. So, we would wholeheartedly and enthusiastically encourage you to adopt this ordinance to help us reduce use rates of cigarettes among kids. Um, through our combined efforts in the community, youth, youth use rates have decreased to their lowest levels in several years of traditional tobacco products. Um, but there's still a lot more work that we can do, and this ordinance will help us tremendously in those efforts. Thank you very much.
Alright. Another call. Anyone else that wants to speak to the, um, cigarette ordinance, tax ordinance? Alright, seeing none, we'll close it. Now, we'll open the floor for the Russell County Meal Tax Ordinance. Anyone want to try to see it? Alright, seeing none, we'll close our Meal Tax Ordinance. Alright, at this time, we have a presentation, Mister, Mister Donald Purdy. Am I saying that right? Purdy, okay. Appalachian Coalition for Intervention, the Star X, SpaceX Starlink.
Thank you all for, for the opportunity to present to you tonight on the, uh, Starlink Project. I am Donald Purdy, and I'm the President of the Appalachian Council for Innovation, which is, you probably remember the Southwest Virginia Technology Council. We changed our name last October. And the reason why we did that briefly is because everybody's got technology. If you got a cellphone, you have way more computing power than they had the first time they went to the moon. So, we've got that covered, okay? Now, what do we do with all this technology? How do we innovate with it? How do we solve problems that we don't even know we have yet? I mean, that's what it comes down to. We gotta be thinking way ahead of the curve. And so, that's what, uh, the Appalachian Council for Innovation is, is about, is connecting businesses with each other and working with state and local governments and with educators to make sure that what we have presented to, to our workforce, to our youth as they're coming up, is the, the right tools to do what they need to do. And the reality is, in fifteen years, there's gonna be kids going to work doing jobs that don't even exist yet. And we gotta figure out how to make sure that we give them that opportunity to get as much ground-based knowledge as we can possibly get them in order to be able to compete with the rest of the world, because that's what we're actually doing. So, Space, uh, Space-Based Starlink is a project that started in Wise County last, uh, last fall. And the, it was a beta test, and it was, um, it was done to try to reach those students who have no internet access or very, or very limited access. Some of them have hu- hotspots on their cellphone, things like that. But, when I was at the presentation that we gave with Congressman Grifith a couple, two or three weeks ago, it was, um, it was interesting to hear that a couple of the parents stood up and saying that they had to take their kid to the fire hall, you know, and sit outside, uh, on weekends. Or they had two, two children in their home, and there was only enough broadband to go around for one. And that's not doing the kids any favors at all. So, we wanna be able to, with, with Starlink, you're gonna be able to actually give, by July, first part of August, internet access to those who don't have it. I mean, I, it just, it's, it's how fast this is moving. Uh, we, um, the beta test, I'll get back to that just for a second. Right now, there are forty-five. They started out with a bandwidth of about eighty megabytes, they're up to a hundred and fifty? We're looking at three hundred by the end of this calendar year in December, three hundred megabytes download speed? Gee whiz. It's, it's hard to wrap your head around this stuff. We literally started talking about this two and a half months ago, and we've already tripled the speed. I mean, it's just amazing how fast this is going. The idea, of course, is to be able to give as, the necessary broadband for students at home so that they can actually get their homework done. Or participate in distance learning if that's the need. Don't rule out the obvious, though, that we can also do telemedicine with this and remote work. And that's vital to what we're gonna have to do going forward, so. Uh, telemedicine is, is the next biggest hurdle we got to jump, and we can do that with this. Right now, in, in, uh, in southwestern Virginia, about sixty percent of the households, according to the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, says that, uh, they have little or no internet. And that's, I've had internet for over twenty-five years. I can't fathom trying to survive without it. I really can't. I mean, that's ju- it's just an essential part of life. I know internet and computers are supposed to make life real easy, and we've been, you know, that didn't work out so well, but we do have an awful lot of information at our fingertips. Um, so, Appalachian Council for Innovation is, is trying to, is partnering with Starlink. So, we're gonna, we are the, the go-between, if you will. We're the ones that's working with the contracts to work with Starlink directly. And the idea is, if we can get six, seven, however many sales you want, because when I, when we first started this, a week and a half ago, when I talked to Mister Lester, we could do one sixty account sale. Now, we can probably do a hundred and twenty accounts. Now, we can do s- two sales, maybe even three, by the time we roll this out. Because, um, Starlink is putting up another two hundred and some satellites, uh, I think day after tomorrow, and, uh, and on Sunday, they're sending up yet another one, another full of these satellites. I mean, just, they just keep sending them up, and the more they send up, the more coverage there is. So, we should be able to do by midsummer, probably two or three sales in Russell County and in every county in southwestern Virginia. And that's because we had a champion at Starlink, he kept saying, hey, we need it here. And, and he, he doesn't let up, and you know who I'm talking about, if you're on his email list, you know exactly who I'm talking about, because you get a thousand of them every week, which is a good thing, actually. Um, so, and just to kinda get this in perspective, we're talking, um, three hundred and sixty homes if we do six sales. And so, uh, three hundred and sixty homes, that's gonna equate to probably four hundred and fifty students. That's just if we do the six sales. And again, we can probably double that capacity. So, we're, and right now, we're guesstimating about three thousand students in southwestern Virginia in the V-Cetera region alone that do not have internet or have very limited capacity to it. And these are the ones that just, you just, just, the business case isn't there for the landlines to get there. And that's, that's always gonna be a problem, so. Um, the other day, not, and you see it up there, FCC approves a Starlink license modification, so what, what that comes down to is that they've licensed to operate more than twenty-eight hundred additional satellites in lower earth orbit. And so, if you think about what is lower earth orbit, that's about three hundred and fifty miles up. Doesn't sound too low, but it's low compared to the fact that the HughesNet and DishType networks were, they are twenty-two thousand five hundred miles up. And that's the reason why when you hit the enter button, and you sit there and wait for it to go all the way up, come all the way back down, and then you gotta, you know, and it just takes a while. Three hundred and fifty miles, the milli- the latency's only like twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five milliseconds. Pretty much the same thing as a fiber optic to your home. So, that's not bad. In fact, that's fantastic, when you stop and think about it. Um, one of the things, uh, another thing is, and this is the, the, an unfortunate part of this whole thing, is our area is one of the lowest, uh, income per capita areas in, in, well, in Virginia, but in the nation. And we gotta fix that, and there's no reason on this earth why we can't fix it. But we're gonna need tools to fix it. We need things like space-based internet to do that. So, kids can get that education that they need when they need it, and they can surf and go and look and see things that they just can't otherwise do. And this is that opportunity to get to those kids. Because, you know, when you listen to that, at that presentation in Wise, uh, a couple, three weeks ago, the resiliency of the people in this region is phenomenal. If something breaks, you just fix it, right? I mean, you just, it is, you just do. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be somebody that went to a four-year college, got a engineering degree to fix it. He just looks at it and says, I can fix that. And they do. And that's what we need to do. We can fix that. And we can fix that and give the kids the opportunity that they need. And that's what this is all about, is making sure that the kids have that opportunity before them. Uh, cost-wise, there's always the cost part. You're looking at, right at two hundred thousand dollars for sixty accounts. And what that includes is the antenna and a two-year subscription. And we have to guarantee that to Starlink, okay? Now, the antenna, if you haven't seen the antenna, it is, in this, what you have to have at your house, first you have to have a clear view of the sky. So, a tree may have to come down, maybe, maybe not, just depends on what your situation is. It's a dish that's about thirty inches in diameter, and it is heated. So, in the wintertime, snow and ice melt off of it. So, you don't have to worry about that piece. It tracks the satellites so that it stays connected. There is one wire that runs from the dish to inside your house. That's it, and it's about the size of your little finger. Then, it hooks to a, what I call a brick, which is where the power cord hooks to, and the ethernet cable that comes from the outside satellite plugs into it, and then the antenna on the inside. That's it. There is literally nothing else to it. I've been dealing with the network for twenty years, and that really gets it simple. It really does. So, the school system in Wise is working with those who were still struggling to get those things set up, so they worked with them, and that would be what I would suggest that, that we do here, because the school systems are gonna know where the addresses are, where the kids are that need the help. And if they could, you know, the, the few that are gonna need some assistance setting it up, uh, you know, we'd suggest that, you know, you, because, again, you know, local, everybody knows everybody type of scenario. Uh, but again, the two hundred thousand is what you get, and, and now there's ways to, to, we're, we're, again, we're looking for ways to buy that cost down. We're looking for different grant opportunities, uh, to see if we can't buy down that cost a little bit. Another, uh, option for you, and, and again, guys, this is, this is brand new. This has not been done anywhere else. I mean, we're literally at the very tip of the spear. So, how do you pay for it? How do you get, um, there, because you know that there's gonna be some that can afford the whole thing? That's a given. And there's gonna be some that can't. And so, what do you base that on? The formula could be a SNAP program, a Title I, Medicaid, Veterans, uh, uh, Disabled Vet Services type of thing. Um, uh, what's another one? One other one I can't remember. But anyway, you got those programs, and, and it might be a combination of those programs to use, or it might just be that you find one that really works best for your scenario. But that'll help buy down that cost. Uh, and again, we're looking at various foundations and other grants. Uh, Department of Education has a, has a grant that we're pursuing, that, that there are others that are pursuing for us, uh, to see about buying down the hardware for about six hundred accounts. Things like that is what we're trying to accomplish. So, but worst-case scenario is two hundred thousand dollars. And to get to sixty homes. And I would dare say if sixty is the magic number, because forty-five was the magic number, uh, in November or December of last year, seemed like a long time ago, it was literally just five months ago. It was forty-five, now it's sixty. I gotta sneak and hunch, it'll be seventy or eighty before this is all said and done per sale. Still gotta buy the subscription, but I'm just saying we can cover more people, because it changes literally that fast. So, I would ask that, uh, that, that you consider, uh, funding at least one sale and, and trying it, because this is, it's working, and we know it works. Again, we went from seventy-five, eighty milli- megabytes to a hundred and fifty in literally five months. So, we know it works, and we know that it can work here as well. And if we can bundle a package between, because, uh, Wise is on board, Dickinson's on board, uh, Tazwell, I'm talking to them tomorrow night, they've already shown extreme interest, Buckhannon and Lee. Uh, so, we got a lot of interest in this. We've already got, like I say, three firm commitments now. So, if we can go to Starlink with a handful of commitment, that's gonna get their attention even more than what we already have their attention. Because, you know, there's, you can go to Starlink and sign up, one, do onesies and twosies, right? That's a hundred dollars, or a million. Which one do you think they're gonna wanna grab first? And it'll be the million, and we'll be able to get that, and we will literally be one of the first places on earth. And it'll be the million, and we'll be able to get that, and we will literally be one of the first places on earth that'll have this kind of coverage. I think that's pretty cool, and giving our kids in our area a head, a hand up, a head up, and an opportunity.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one, do you have a business card?
I do, yeah, I meant to hand that out to you.
Follow-up, in case we have follow-up?
Sure.
Uh, what's the upload speed?
Uh, it's about usually half or better. Yeah, so if you got one fifty, you got seventy-five up, and I got twenty-five at my house, damn. And I've got fiber, you know, I guess I could turn it up if I wanted to, and I probably will at some point, but, you know, I, hey, and what I'm paying is not that much different than what this is, which is a hundred dollars a month.
After, after the two-year, after the two-year agreement, what's the cost go to then?
Don't know. It could stay at a hundred a month per subscriber, or it could very well start coming down as coverage goes. There's also competition. Jeff Bezos is really, you know, now we got to battle the billionaires. And so Jeff Bezos is wanting to send satellites up as well. So the second he does that, the first thing that's gonna happen is Elon will probably cut his price, and that'll destroy, you know, the the model that they add. This this is gonna be a battle, and the battle wins is in our pockets, because, you know, price will start coming down, just like it does on everything else. Two people driving competition. And then there's a third outfit that's trying to do this as well. They haven't lit the first rocket yet, and Elon's already sent up, I don't know how many, twenty-five, thirty rockets so far. So he's, he's pretty much got this figured out, so.
In the, in selecting these these cells, these sixty connections, what kind of geographical area will that antenna hold? Do they, do they have to be within a thousand feet, a half mile?
Okay, so the 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 satellites themselves will cover about a five-mile radius, okay? And and so if you think about it, you know, ten-mile diameter, and you got two or three cells, pretty well got your county halfway, you know, pretty well covered, especially with overlaps and things like that with the other counties. The antenna itself that you have in your home will just cover inside your home and.
Okay, it's it's individual antennas.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
It's not one big antenna, it's an individual antenna.
It's an individual antenna, that's correct, yeah.
For the geographic area of Russell County, I mean, we're all sitting here representing one, you know, but it it would encompass the five miles. Have you looked at that to see?
I I I did have privilege to actually look at that, and I think there's like five or six cells, if I'm not mistaken, or four cells, I think, cover Russell County, I think. I'd have to go back and look.
Is there some sort of analysis you do to see what areas you can cover with the satellites?
It is, and that's way beyond my pay grade, to be honest with you, okay? This is all done by Elons and the uh, Jim, uh, engineers, when they were figuring all this stuff out, what they're gonna cover. But uh, Jack did get the addresses, no names of source, but addresses of where uh, kids were without internet. And provided that with the the overlay that that he was able to see. And he said, well, we can cover, no question, we can cover this one, or we could cover this one, or we, you know, so there's several that we can cover and cover, you know, we just gotta figure which where you get the biggest bang for your buck, in other words.
That'd be really good for the board to have a copy of that, to be able to see what the utilization areas would be, because what we're seeing now is a lot of unserved, underserved communities don't get, don't get service. And and anytime anybody, even any map comes out, usually shows the more populated area and not the less populated area. I'm just, I'm just saying.
And this, the map that I was, uh, actually had the privilege of taking a quick peek at, literally, because it's proprietary, uh, was, there were several cells that covered, again, there was overlap around Saint Paul, Russell, and Wise, there's an overlap cell there. Uh, there's one in Tazewell that overlaps, you know, et cetera. So there's a lot of overlap, so you're gonna get, and and if we can work with each county, can work to figure out who gets what, where, and how, you know, that that's gonna, you're gonna expand your coverage, in other words.
There there are areas that this is probably the only way they're gonna get internet service.
I agree.
And, you know. Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, again, that's just one cell, a- again, and the more rockets that go up, the bigger the cells are gonna get, the more you're gonna be able to cover in a cell, et cetera. I mean, that's just, 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 it's just the math at this point of how many satellites he can get up, and at the rate he's shooting them up there, by July or August, there's gonna be a blanket over this area.
I think, I think what the community looks at us, you know, well, you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars, and I still can't get access to it, you know, I'm still left out. You know, I mean, that's a huge concern. I mean, I'm in the broadband business, and I own a broadband company, and and, you know, I think it's a great ideal, because I think it's so critical for the outline areas where it's so expensive. I mean, overwhelming expense to be able to get it to the last home.
Exactly.
And every company I talk to, for an example, Clark's Valley, in my district. I mean, I've done everything, beg, cry, plead, to try to get two companies, it's on one end, another company's on the other, to build that and look for opportunity grants or whatever. You know what I'm saying? But I mean, it's, it's something that's such a need. I'd hope that Clark's Valley is within the demographic area. You know, but I'm just saying, it'd be nice to know that.
I'll, I will go back and get that information and provide, and and let you know what what all areas we can cover, but I I, from what I looked at uh, two weeks ago to what it is now, it probably covers more.
Depends on how many satellites.
That's exactly right.
Let me ask you, for that two hundred thousand dollars, you said that covered the cost of the antennas and a year's service?
Two years.
Two years' service?
Two years.
Okay, two years' service.
Two-year service, that's correct.
David, that's only three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars a connection.
That's hard to beat when you're talking ground, ground cost or just, yeah.
I mean, as far as uh, looking at rural area of America, I mean, and how, you know, I'm over in Dickinson, Buchanan, parts of Tazewell, Russell. I mean, it would cost me unbelievable amount of money to get it to two or three homes up in the valley or up in the hollow or across the creek, or whatever it may be. And, you know, it's just something that's desperately needed, you know?
Well, let me give you a little example of how desperately it's needed. I've been working with Scott Kaiser since back before Christmas on this.
Okay.
Uh, IT director in Wise County, and I submitted data of all the, you know, the households that we knew
Right.
were not served. And we had that data because of COVID and the virtual learning.
Right.
There's over, there was over nine hundred addresses in Russell County that I submitted. So they they know where the areas are and where, I think, that's what they were using to determine the sales.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, and and I was thrilled to think we were gonna get sixty, and now that we possibly may get three times.
Twice that, or maybe three times that. Again, it's as fast as this is going.
But it, but that tells you the need. I mean, we had over nine hundred households that said they had no internet, or not enough internet to do virtual learning.
Right.
So even if you take half of those, that's five hundred just in our county.
Yeah.
So there's a huge need.
So um, I'd be, you know, happy to answer any question, any other questions you got, or uh, you've, I, I know the need is there, it's obvious, I mean, and and you, I know you guys see it, so it's just a matter of, we're, we're working, like I say, we're gonna be contracting with Starlink directly. So you would basically contract with Appalachian Council for Innovation to get, you know, and and we go from there, and it's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Yes, sir.
I have one question, I'm sorry. On these, has the schools and counties partnered? We have the American Relief Plan that's coming in between the schools and the counties. This is an applicable cost that can, that's under that program. So it, is Wise County and Br- and Wise County Schools partner in on this, or is Wise County carry this on their own from the schools, or is it a partnership?
It's a partnership.
It is a partnership.
I don't know how much of a partnership. I haven't gotten into the weeds with that, quite frankly, but, because that was all set up before uh, Appalachian Council got involved, but it, I do know it'd be a partnership.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the information. Thank you.
I'll leave a card with uh, Mr. Lester, if that's okay? Okay, thank you very much.
Now we have our, our new business is the uh, approval of our minutes. Our first one was our regular April the fifth regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? It's written.
So moved.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have a second for those minutes?
Second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Second one is our budget workshop that we had the following Monday, April the twelfth, and Steve, you raps at that day. So do we have a motion to accept the minutes of our April twelfth meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Ours?
I'll say.
And David, second. All right, thank you all. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have Cheryl Upstein, since I was not there.
Okay, you got everything then, once again, okay, good deal, thank you. All right, the second thing under new business is to approve our expenditures. Do we have a motion to accept our expenditures for this month?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Lou, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing is our committee appointment, and this was under Carl's district. This is for the Russell County Planning Commission, and it was Mr. Edmonds' position for four years.
Madam Chair, I have a question about that.
Okay.
Why, why is it Carl's position?
Well, it just happened to be the fact that's where it was in that district.
Yeah, but if I'm, if I'm correct now, let me explain, the only ones that we've actually agreed that we would have one appointment per supervisor was for the PSA when we did that. We have never formally agreed that we would do one appointment per supervisor for all the rest of these. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to it. I think it's probably a good idea, but we just need to formally, if we wanna do that, we need to formally do that. Am I right, Lanza?
That's, that's at discretion of the board supervisor.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
So I I I think we would, if if we wanna do, do that and incrementally work our way into an appointment per supervisor as one comes off, then, you know, we need to formally make a, make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
I have a question also. Before we do that, you know, it came up for consideration about having a board member uh, appoint a position on these particular boards. Uh, and we had talked about narrowing it down to seven uh, on every board, with the exception of those that are, uh, you know, I guess have regula- regulatory issues with the state, like the IDA with the additional two appointments. But that's one thing I would like to see our board do, is trim this thing down to one appointment per board member. We have a tremendous amount of uh, you know, these appointments on these boards, and I think it really just needs to be one per member.
Yeah, their bylaws would have to be, we'd have to rewrite those back.
I understand.
Okay, Katie, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
That you wanna maybe consider amending your bylaws to state how committees and boards are gonna be appointed, and then some of their, some of their bylaws may need to be amended if if that changes, if they're specifically in there. Some, some probably don't even mention how people are appointed, but I think if you all wanna have sort of like that blanket rule, that would need to be in your bylaws.
I, I personally think it's a good idea, you know, and I'm certainly not opposed to it, but I just, I don't think we've ever really formally, you know, done it.
No.
Yeah, we just, we agreed to do it on the PSA because it was completely new.
Because when we redid that, yes.
Yes, and Madam Chair, if I may, I totally could not agree more with Mr. Eaton and Mr. Breeding tonight. Um, and I don't have a representative on the, on the planning commission, so um, anyway, no one from District Two is on the planning commission at this time. So I think that would be very good if we could just, can we let that appointment ride? I mean, and just not feel it today?
Table it.
Till next month, yeah.
Ta- They'll continue to serve until uh, it's changed, so bylaws have changed. Continue.
Well, I just think it gives you equal representation, and you don't just keep loading up these boards and, you know, it would save the county taxpayers money, too, I mean, not to have, I don't know how many is on the planning commission, do you? About twelve? I mean, and what do they get on a stifling permit?
So you're, so you're not only asking, you're, you're asking to limit the number of people that are on the planning commission? Okay, so that's different.
Well, every, every board except where there's an exemption, uh, every board except where there's an exemption from the state or.
The only one that I'm aware of would be the IDA where it's written into the legislature that the town has two appointments, isn't that what we?
Yes, they have to, if you have nine members.
So we would have nine, you know, and and I think it's important that we have an odd number on each one, so seven appointments would be an odd number.
And it's nothing personal, it just gives you a balance and level playing field, like Lou said, she don't even have a person on the planning commission. And that's a very critical operational fact for our county. And we all do need one representative that represents us from the planning commission or from the IDA or from, you know, whatever means throughout our districts to have that voice or have that communication back and forth to the supervisor, so. I I just think it's a great idea. I think we need to postpone this and then reevaluate, reevaluate the bylaws and move on that as soon as we can.
We can make amendment to the bylaws for how you all appoint it, but actually changing the number of certain boards will have to do.
Can, can you look into that, Katie, and and we can address it at the next board meeting?
Sure, sure, that should be a pretty simple amendment to your all's bylaws.
So we'll need a motion just to table this for now, and he will continue serving until you come back with the information. Okay, so I'll take a motion to table this for now.
Or as may.
Or as you may, thank you.
I'll say.
And David, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Mr. Edmonds will continue till Katie comes back with uh, some information for us. All right, our next thing is our citizens' comment period. Please limit to three minutes. State your name and your address. First is Michelle Vance.
Good evening. Uh, Michelle Vance, ninety-nine Willow Springs Drive. I'm here tonight on behalf of Amanda Thomas and the Southwest Virginia Star Project. She called into the county administrator's office uh, to get information on rental for the old Given School. Um, she was told that uh, someone would have to speak with Mr. Lester regarding this. She received a call back on April the twenty-first, and I was gonna read, um, I wrote down everything that was said, but I think it'd be better if you heard it. I have the voicemail message here. If it'll play.
Uh, Amanda, this is already, it's Board of Supervisors office. I checked on that building, uh, the Given School, and he said it would be too large and too expensive, too much rent and heat and all that stuff, I believe. So uh, he suggested maybe you check with C.H. Wallace in the town home acre there and see if there was something that would suit better than that. But he just, uh, he didn't think that that could be used for that. So, all right, good luck. All right, bye-bye.
Um, Amanda's not generally uh, one to come up and complain, so I took it upon myself for her. I'm not exactly sure where you got your customer service from, Mr. Lester, but that's not the way customer service is. It's no one's business how big, how small, how much she can afford, how much she can't afford. If it's for rent, she is due what she is asked. It's a county property. She was asking for information. She was not asking for anyone's opinion if she could afford it or how big it was, or if it was too big for what she needed. I think there's an apology that's owed to Ms. Thomas and to the Southwest Virginia Star Project. They do wonderful work over in the Homeacre area. She is there for everyone that needs help. She is there when someone's house burns down. She is there when someone has a family member passes away. She is there when someone needs food. She is there when someone needs clothing. There's never any time that Amanda ever turns anybody away. And that, when I heard that, I was just appalled, totally appalled by that. Andrew Hensley could also not be here this evening, and he wanted me to throw this in as well. And wanted to know, uh, since the Given School and Oak Grove School are sitting there empty, why are we still holding on to them? Why haven't we put them up for sale and for auction? Um, it just seems like a waste of money, just sitting there, not being utilized, nobody's renting them, it's just kinda, the buildings are falling apart, so on and so forth. Um, that's really all I have, but I would hope that the board would do something about this for Ms. Thomas, because. because it's not right. It's not right at all.
Lonzo, can you provide documentation on the facility itself to her? And reach back out to her maybe and set up a meeting with her in regards to that? I, you know, I, she has a large facility out there, and I think that they've got it up for sale if I'm not, if I'm not wrong.
Yes, that's correct.
And I know she does provide a, an unbelievable service just like Yell Garden, the deal we worked out with them on the school. Uh, it wouldn't be really any different. I mean, if we could come up with a purchase price or, she's a nonprofit, am I not correct?
Yes.
Yes, they're nonprofit. I work for them.
Okay. So I mean, there might be an opportunity for some grant opportunity or something like that. I, I've worked tirelessly trying to get somebody in that, but we had, we were so close to a company before COVID hit. And, uh, you know, it just, you know, that kind of backfired on us, but, uh, I mean, if hers are...
She sold an auction two nights late to sustain what she does.
Yeah.
My husband gives his time to do the auction.
Yeah, I mean, if we can come up with a purchase price or a lease purchase or something like that, I mean, just something to put together on the facility. I think it's open for discussion as far as what we can do. We sure don't want it to end up like Cleveland.
Exactly.
And, and as far as Oak Grove, I don't, I don't think Oak Grove is inhabitable right now. We really, we closed it down because of asbestos and things of that nature.
Yes.
And about all it can be done up there, I think, is tear it down, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and you know, maybe that's something you all...
You wouldn't like to buy that building, would you?
I don't know how much my cell costs.
That, that's one we probably should put up for auction and whatever the community center doesn't need there.
Alright.
Talked about that, and, and I think the issue is the cost of tearing it down because of the asbestos, so, but that's an ongoing discussion.
Alright, next on our sign-in sheet is Sean Vance. Okay, alright. Uh, Michael Hale.
Yeah, Michael Hale, I live in Russell County. I live on Blade Hill. Um, been trying to reach out to Carl several times, couldn't get an answer back, so I figured I'd come here tonight to get an answer. Know y'all put county water up through there, it's probably on the road. Grateful for that. But since then, I mean, y'all have your county vehicles going in and out, actually, school bus going in and out. Don't oppose any of that. But it does make the road worse. Uh, are there anything in place to try to keep this road worked? Are y'all going to keep putting your county vehicles on it, school buses and stuff? If so, shouldn't the county take that road over?
Okay, now, what, what road, what did you say?
It's Blade Hill Drive, probably on the road.
That's a V dot question, I guess.
Yeah, well... Right. Well, I mean, I just know that the county's getting the water off of it. I mean, I don't oppose it. I don't need it. I've got a good well. Somewhere down the road, my well may go dry. If so, I will hook to the county water. Same thing with the bus, I don't oppose that because I don't want to see those kids that are standing at the road. But the vehicle's going across, it's tearing the road up. Myself and other people lived there, it goes getting gravel beside the road, rocks that fell off shale cliff to put in there, because nobody fixed it. Your all's vehicles beating it out, we got to fix it back. Shouldn't be our problem. Thanks.
Next, Austin Keith.
Dustin.
Keith, excuse me, Dustin. Glasses on. Okay, he's already, he's, he's already gone, he's already spoken, alright. And Jerry Connor.
Uh, my name's Jerry Connor and I'll, uh, one sixty-eight Miners Drive Castlewood. And my question to the board is, since we're talking about raising taxes on the business owners and such, how come the county can't do something about the illegal businesses that are opening up in the county and fine them big time instead of hurting the business owner? It's just my suggestion. So that's all I got to say.
You know, that brings, that brings up the question of a business license again that we talked about before. I don't know.
No, not with...
We can't do a business license as long as we have a merchant's tax, right?
That is correct, sir.
So we just need to figure out how to do it, you know, to, to replace that merchant's capital tax. No, the merchant's capital tax... Well, it, it could be, but what, what he's saying, there's what, about sixty thousand dollars a year that comes out of merchant's capital tax?
Yes.
We need to structure a business license so that we could, the cost of it would replace that, so as not to lose the revenue. But the real concern is not knowing who's out there and what they're doing and how we can help them market, you know? Because there's, I'm sure there, there are people out there doing things. I know that we could help them if, you know, from a marketing standpoint, you know, even, you know...
I'm not on there to speak, but I have phone calls all the time wanting to know how many businesses are in the county, and there is no way on earth to track it at all.
We, we don't know. We don't know, and I, I think it's something we really need to look at, you know?
And even each town does it, like on the, on their website, they don't have up-to-date business that are in business either, they just don't. Like, my website's up-to-date, it's automatic when they pay their dues, so if they're on there, they pay their dues and they have a license, but I can't track anybody else's.
Right, anything outside of towns. Does Homeacre require a business license? Okay, so any, anything outside of towns is unknown, you know?
Anyone else with a public comment? Any other citizens? Okay. Yes, steps, yes, state, yes, come up and state your name and, uh, give us your address. Yeah, we've broken every rule tonight there is.
Ghost Diggson, I'm from down in Luanne's district. And I've had, I've had a problem I've been working on for eight years, and I've not made any progress, so I decided to come here tonight. Claude Hart and I own twenty-five percent enters and two hundred and sixteen acres of mineral land on Hamlin Creek. But we just own twenty-five percent, but we own other mineral around that, that, that borders this two hundred and sixteen acres. And, uh, my game plan is to have it sold at the courthouse for no, uh, delinquent taxes. And I've been trying for eight years to get on the list, and tomorrow's sale day, and they keep telling me it's going to be on the next one. And I've looked and it's not there. And I was wondering if I could get any relief. I've got a lawyer and a coal broker that tells me that they think that they could merchandise this. And we could put together about five hundred acres of coal land there, and, I mean, somebody might go to work. And I don't, I, for the life of me, I've talked to the people in Han, uh, the lawyers up in Hanover County or Henrico County, and I, every time I call, I get a little different story, but no action. So I was just wondering if there might be something y'all could do to assist me. And, and it can go to auction, it brings more than we want, we like to buy it back, but if it brings more than we think it's worth, somebody else will own it.
Yep, Ghost, Ghost, how far are the, are the taxes behind? How many years behind?
About three. Luanne there knows, I've shown you her several times.
Okay, Lou.
Yeah, with the taxes are three, ever how long they go back, in three years, I think, is, all they can collect is three years. Did I not correct on that? Yeah, right. But now, on the part that we don't own, there's never been no taxes paid.
Katie, is that something?
I've talked to Felicia, Mr. Thompson, I've talked to everybody that I can think of, and it'll be on the next one.
I'm, I'm, I'm not the attorney for the county that handles the tax sales, but I mean, I can try to look, work with Lonzo and look into it.
Well, does she have a business card? Who I can talk to her?
Well, I mean, you know, what, what this board done initially, you know, is to get a lot of these properties sold and getting back on the records, on the tax records. And, you know, I think this needs to be treated fairly as well as the others. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, if it needs to be addressed, and, I mean, maybe it needs to come from a letter from our board stating that all these need to be looked at equally and don't put it off. If there's some opportunity like Ghost is telling us, I mean, if there's an opportunity that for the economic side of it, we should have done moved on it, my personal feeling. Something should have happened.
Who, who owns the surface on that?
Uh, uh, the Smiths lady owns it, but in this deed, in this deed for the two hundred and sixteen acres, it gives the right for you to go in there and dig a hole, go down, you can, uh, cut timber off the property to, to supply the mine. You can use the rock off the ground. I mean, it's just like owning the surface, in my opinion, man. Is that right, Luanne? You ready?
Yes, Mr. Diggson, it is.
Or the, so the surface taxes hadn't been paid either, or...
Oh, I feel sure the surface tax has been paid. The mineral tax has not been paid.
Now, tell them that you're, you're a twenty-five percent owner, but tell them how many you think, how many people you might think is the owner of the other piece.
Well, in the twenty-five percent, there was about a hundred ours. And in the three-fourths, there's about, I estimated about five hundred, and they're in foreign countries and... But I, my goal, my, my thoughts were at the time, I didn't know, have to do a little re, and didn't do my research, but to sell mineral land, you've got to have eighty-six percent of the, of the, uh, ownership to force a partition suit.
I'm, I'm almost afraid a petition suit might be how you'd have to...
Do what now?
I think maybe a petition suit might be how you'd have to handle it, you know, to get, to get a judge to...
You've got to have eighty, about eighty-six percent enters in the property before you can file a partition, a partition suit. I just have twenty-five percent. Yeah, but that's the reason I'm here tonight, I want y'all to sell it for me. But I mean, y'all can sell it, the taxes hadn't been paid.
Just like we're doing the other, just like we're doing the other problems.
Right.
I can look into it. I mean, obviously, mineral, mineral rights are different than land rights, and if, if the, if the real estate taxes for us are being paid, then I mean, it may, it may not be quite as simple. But if you want to contact Lonzo, if you have an attorney, it's probably best if I don't speak with you directly because I don't want to do anything that's unethical, but I'm happy to speak to your attorney if you want me to.
My attorney. Did you ever say that again? I didn't, I didn't know you was talking to me.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. You, you just referenced speaking to attorneys, so I don't know if you, do you have a, an attorney that you consulted in this matter? Okay, it, so it's probably not best if I speak to you directly on it because you're represented in that matter. So I'd, since I'm an attorney, I would have to speak to that attorney.
Yes, but we, be assured, we want you to sell that and do, uh, great, great work with that, honestly. But this is the, a quagmire that I can hardly even wrap my head around. And we've been at this for a long time. Yes, we have.
Well, I thank you for listening to me.
Alright. Any other citizens? Any other citizen coming? Alright, seeing none, we'll close that. Our constitutional officers and reports? Seeing none. Alright, county attorney reports and requests. Okay.
You all had the, you all had the public hearing on the cigarette tax ordinance, and it's something that Lonzo has put together and I've reviewed. Um, and it's, and we've gone over it with, um, Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer because they're going to be the ones who are enforcing and carrying out, um, the ordinance. Um, I don't know if Lonzo's put the rate that he's suggesting in, so he may have to say that. I did have one change, um, myself, that's not on the, what was put in the board's packet, and that's on page two under method of payment subsection B. Um, the way it reads now, it says the Commissioner of Revenue may, um, permit the payment in advance of the tax, um, levied. And I, I, I changed it to require or permit, so, because again, later on in the ordinance, it talks about how he will, um, formulate the rules on how this is going to be enforced, so, um, I didn't want to limit him if that's something that, um, that he wanted to require, but it's not mandatory, but that language I did, um, change. Um, other than that, um, I just, I, I've reviewed the ordinance, and Lonzo, as far as the, the rate, is, is the rate that's, um, in the board packet the rate that you're proposing to the board?
Thank you, Katie. Uh, yeah, right now, in the cigarette tax, I have put in for the amount levied. And if you'll look into, uh, page two of seven, and, uh, there is hereby levied and imposed by the county upon every seller of cigarettes, an exercise tax of twenty-five hundred, one point two five cents per cigarette. That's, that's the way it has to be taxed. You can't, it's got to be, because of the variance in the different packs, you must tax per cigarette, so... But one of the things I need for the, you know, the, would like for the board to consider is, whatever you tax, if, if this is twenty-five cents on, on the pack, this, this, five cents of this will include administration. Now, whether we had done it when they first proposed it by the state, the state was going to take over control of this, and they were going to cha, take five percent off the aggregate at the beginning for administration. So whatever your net is, then you've got to remember, five percent is for the administration, for the agent, the machines, the distributor cost, and the additional, you know, work that's going to be worked on by the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer's Office. So I had proposed twenty-five cents. Y'all have been given a list of the other adjacent counties, well, other towns that are comparable. Uh, again, if you're going to do this, then you need to be competitive in, in the same way that they are. So the range would be twenty-five to thirty cents. We have ability under the Code of Virginia to go up to forty cents per pack. Thank you.
Question please? Do we have a motion to accept this cigarette tax as it is?
Right.
Well, I'll make the motion that we accept the, uh, cigarette tax as presented by council and by administrator.
Do they want to accept it or do they do step?
I'm, I'm going to second for discussion.
Okay, Steve, thank you.
Does this tax apply to only cigarettes? How about chewing tobacco and things of that nature?
It, it only applies to cigarettes right now. That's the only statutory authority.
So it does not sniff any of that other stuff?
That may come, um, I know it's in discussion, but obviously that would be in the hands of the...
This is cigarette only, okay.
I've got a question. Well, you know, when we first got elected, uh, we were, I was hounded quite, quite a bit about different issues and different money appropriations that need to be addressed throughout the county, long-term, long-term plan. And like I said at the last budget meeting, you know, I don't think people, they, they will complain and they'll have some issues, but if they knew where their money was going, and some of this was earmarked for different things, whether it be economic development, tourism, or whatever it may be on any one of these, I think it, it carries a lot knowing where your money's going to be spent in that regard. And I know we've talked about it as a board, I've talked a little about it as far as appropriations of this fund are earmarking some of the money. One of the things I, I can tell you as a county, for us to be able to be competitive, I mean, to really be competitive, is, and I would like for the budget committee to take this upon themselves, because me and, me and Steve hit it wide open in the beginning. But we have a, a lot of things here in this county that we're not as competitive with. One is school teachers' pay. And, you know, if the five percent comes down, also Taz and Washington's going to get the same five percent. So how do we ever in our lifetime catch up to these issues? We never do.
And we'll never be able to be competitive for people want to move here, live here, work here, build a house here, and to be able to feed their family here, unless somebody's going to have to make a tough choice eventually, stating that all these other counties around us are out doing the things that we need to be doing. I know we have a lower population, I understand that, but still, I'm a pretty competitive guy. And for us to be able to get new industry and be able to, you know, and our school, to me, is like an industrial development project. It's got, it's the largest employer we have in our county. Our janitors, our, uh, cooks, we're the lowest paid on the bottom, and the highest paid, no offense to them, in, in the, in the, in the central area. And, you know, eventually, we're going to have to look at those people, it's making a considerable amount of money, and I brought it up, I got hammered over it. Freeze that pay and, and add the percentage of increase to some of these teachers to get them up to the level to where we can attract, and I would like for us to look at this, I mean, if we're going to have these taxes in place, what are we going to do with the money? Where, where is it best spent? Where can we best spend this money to make sure that, you know, we're growing the economy, we're adding more jobs, and we're attracting more people to come and live and work here in Russell County? I don't ever see us catching up, because we can't compete when they're paying ten thousand dollars or more per teacher, and we're, you know, we're never going to get caught up. And I've had this discussion with Dr. Brown, I've had it with some of those school board members. You know, you can only have so much money when it comes to machine and tool and property tax, and really, you're penalizing a lot of people with that, because you have people that rent, don't pay it, and I mean, I could go on and on, because I dealt with this with the town of Honaker. But I was the guy that implemented the food tax in the town of Honaker, and when I did, that was eons ago. We started out at two percent, but as we built it up, I had one town council member threaten to whip me over, because he said it's a tax, I said, listen, everybody that drives through our county, drives into our town, helps contribute, helps contribute to the balance of the budget. It's not just, you're not just putting the burden on the local taxpayers that live here. So everybody that drives through and they come in to your county, which is an extremely amount of, a, a lot, a lot of people, especially, and we had this conversation about when construction jobs were going on, or when projects like the power plant down there in St. Paul, it, it's hard to tell how much money we would have generated through that opportunity. So, I just want the public to understand, you really can't put everything on the backs of, uh, the property owners and the personal property. You've got to look at area ways to be able to generate and let everybody else help contribute to your budgetary needs. By that, I would like for our board to look at how we earmark some of this funding.
Uh, David, I don't, I don't think we can earmark this money, because truthfully, we don't, we, we can anticipate where we think we need it, but I'm not convinced, you know, that that's absolutely where it would need to go. I think it probably needs to go in the general fund, and, and then we can, as, as the need shows up. The problem with earmarking, it's kind of like that lottery money, it was earmarked for the schools and about the state, and they got some of it, some of it they didn't, you know? Uh, but, you know, this, I, I, I think everybody needs to understand, this mandated five percent increase is coming down from the state. The state pays for some of those positions, am I right, Lonzo?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That, that pays for the schools that are direct, you know, the teaching positions and, and certain positions at the administration level. It also pays for all the constitution officers that are designated, that is paid one hundred percent by the state. So, only thing that we have to do is, as far as the, the, from the general funds, is to fill out what is the county employees that are not state-supported.
And in the past, those county employees and the ones that were not covered by the state had kind of been left behind.
They, there were many years that they were not...
And we made the decision that first year that we needed to include everybody, play on an equal playing ground.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason that we're going to need some of this money, uh, in, in the courthouse. Who knows what, I'm, I'm...
One other thing that...
Concerned about it, because of the price of materials alone, what it's going to do to us.
Yeah, let me say this, what I'm, what I mean by earmarking is just to have a projected plan. I mean, you know if we earmark it, if the general fund needs it, they're going to take it anyway. I mean, that's just how it works. So, what I'm saying is, if it's a, if it's a, if we look at, like, say tourism, how much money do we put in tourism? How much? How much? Six thousand dollars? And what I'm saying is, if you set a projection on it, and say you had to have the money to fulfill another responsibility, you, you got that legal accessibility to do that. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I think the public needs, I think we need a plan, like, long-term, of what kind of investments we're willing to make.
I, I think we need a plan somehow, and this is going to have to be something that school board is going to have to work on, is a plan to see how we can ever become, you're right, we'll never become competitive on teacher salaries, as long as, you know, everybody does the mandatory raise. We've, we've got to look at some way that they can be more competitive, you know? And we had talked about freezing salaries at one time. I can get the admin, I can get the, the aver, the state average for the teachers, and I can get it for the principals and the assistant principals. I, I can't find it anywhere for the administrative people, nor the custodians or anybody like that. But, uh, you know, my thought would be that, you know, whatever the highest percentage is, we freeze that one until the lowest percentage comes up to the next highest percentage, you know? But, but that's a school board decision, that's not our call, you know? But, you know, it, it really, it really sort of rubs me the wrong way, you know?
One, one of the things that the board has to consider is this, the cigarette tax and the meal tax is an exercise tax, okay? When we look at who it affects in, in the, in the population that we've got within the county, you must carve out the towns automatically. So, this is not a cash wind file, an exercise tax, it keeps you off the real estate and the personal property. If you go back and look at the real estate tax, in nineteen ninety-nine, it was sixty-three cents on the hundred. It, it was, you know, it was, I mean, sixty-four cents on the hundred, I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's, it's higher today, uh, lower today than it was twenty years ago. Y'all have not raised the taxes, it's one cent less on the hundred over, since nineteen ninety-nine. So, the, this is a way to, you know, to be able to fulfill what the county has as services that y'all get. Y'all have got obligations into economic development projects that are coming up. This, this, y'all will be able to fulfill those things. You also have the casino that's going in. The, the public will be traveling on Route nineteen fifty-eight, seventy-one, eighty, leaps and bounds coming out of Kentucky and West Virginia. That's who we're trying to catch with the food and, and the rest. If, uh, if, if citizens in Russell County wants to go to the town of Honaker, they'll pay ten cents on the pack. That, that's the ones that live there, the ones that live near Lebanon, the ones that live near Castlewood or the, the town of St. Paul. That's the ones that are catch, but the ones that's coming through and traveling, those fifteen to seventeen thousand cars a day, here's V Dot sitting in the room, they know what the traffic county is on, up here. So, that's who we're trying to catch.
No, I fully understand, I mean, I know we're trying to catch the intake, to be able to support the county and not have to go other ways and other, other, but I know we got a lot of things and a lot of projects in, in the realm right here with the courthouse and all that. I'd rather for somebody outside the area to help us pay the bills and all of us.
Right.
That's it, and Project Jonah, you got these, these projects standing, standing.
Yeah, it, it's nice to have them pay some of that, rather than the people that are truly vested, the people that own property and, and such.
Yes, sir.
Call for the book, ma'am.
Okay, that's exactly, any other discussion, folks? Alright. Alright, with all that said, all those that are in favor of the cigarette tax, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, Carl? Okay, next.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Did you all hear any of that, or do I need to start over? Okay, I'm sorry, um, the meal tax ordinance, I did prepare and I sent to Lonzo with a few questions that I had for how it was going to be administered. The one, um, suggested change he had and on the section on page, um, or under the commission to seller for collection of tax, um, in, in the draft I prepared it, it allowed for a three percent of a tax deduction, um, under that, and Lonzo suggested that would be one and a half percent. Um, other than that, I've, um, I did, we did check to see about the collection of the days, and we checked with, um, the Commissioner of Revenue, um, and, um, he was okay with the, the days that the tax would be collected under this ordinance, but other than that, I just asked the, um, if the board would like to accept this ordinance.
Alright, with that, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion to accept the meal tax ordinance?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we accept the meals tax order, ordinance as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
For discussion, Steve, you want to step, okay?
This will not apply to the towns who already have a meals tax. It will apply only to the areas outside of the towns. Okay.
Yes. Any further discussion?
Three percent and, and one and a half percent, you said?
Yes, that's under, um, it's under the section labeled commission to the seller for collection of tax.
Alright, Steve, any, alright, any further discussion? Any comments?
I do have a question, what's the, what's the meal tax rate in Lebanon, does anybody know here?
What?
Six percent in Lebanon.
Same, same, this is the same.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe that's what it is in Honaker also.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of the meal tax ordinance? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Give her the mic again.
I'm sorry, the last, um, request that I have is, um, for authorization to do, and instead of an RFP, it's an RFQ, um, for the Building Construction Enviro, Environmental, um, Inspection Service Regarding Project Jonah. Um, this is again, a project that we're working with, with, um, Tazewell and Buchanan Counties, and, um, I will work closely with them, I don't know if they'll want their boards to approve it, but really, it sort of falls on our shoulders to get this ball rolling. Um, and because it is for professional services, we will be using competitive negotiation, which means that price is not the only consideration, we can consider experience and, and other qualifications and other, um, um, items and that, other, other qualifications that we deem, um, important. So, I would, um, just ask for the board's authorization to do that on your behalf.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Any thoughts? Alright, all those in favor of doing this request for proposal for a, uh, a building inspector-type service for the Project Jonah? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next, we have our county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
First up on the county administrator reports and requests is the Three Rivers Destination Center, the A R C power grant application for one point five million dollars. This is a power grant application for building an outdoor recreation, uh, facility that will be housing the heart of Appalachia, uh, in Russell County, and at the interests of St. Paul and to the Clinch River, uh, Clinch River and State Park. Um, the project will, uh, complete the construction of the Three River Destination Center, which will be a hub for visitors and community members to significantly grow the outdoor recreation and tourism economy in southwest Virginia. The center will be located right in the middle of Virginia's coalfield region with access to the Clinch River State Park, the nearby Jefferson National Park, the Brakes Interstate Park, and several other additional res, uh, uh, recreation amenities. It, uh, it also, right now, it will build on a, uh, five hundred thousand dollars that is already standing in funding from the Department of Community Development and the Debacle Commission. They have a total combined match already in place of five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. So, the Destination Center will be centrally located within the seven county region footprint to promote the area's tourism assets and increased visitation and tourism for the coalfield region. The center will serve as an information hub for all of the visitors and visitor trips, connect the region amenities and businesses, and learn about the area's natural assets and book reservations for all of the criticals to grow the local outdoor economy, create new job opportunities, and help foster the creation of small businesses. This is, again, this is the A R C report, uh, power grant that for one point five million dollars, that has five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars in match already in place, so...
I've, I've got a couple of questions on that.
Yes, sir.
Of that match money, where, where is it coming from, you said?
Yes, yes, sir, it's, it's split between the Department of, uh, uh, Community Development and the Debacle Commission. Yes.
Excuse me, I'm not using microphone. I noticed it said that, uh, we're going to create sixteen new jobs. Are, are those construction jobs, or are those permanent jobs?
You, on the sixteen jobs?
Yeah.
Those are permanent, with the heart of Appalachia, yes.
So there'll be construction jobs in addition to that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, of those, of those sixteen jobs, I assume this, down where it talks about the projected three-year increase in local taxes, uh, where, where are those local taxes? Is that a Russell County tax, or is it throughout the entire area?
That's the, throughout the, the entire region.
Through the entire region.
Meal taxes you just passed, yes, absolutely.
So that would be probably in sales tax or something like that?
Yeah, meals tax, yes, sir.
The new wages, a million one, that would be for those sixteen jobs then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that over a three-year period, or is that per year?
That's over a three-year period.
Three-year period, so...
And that, the heart of Appalachia is funded by the state, so, again, these are jobs that will be created, but it's not paid by the county.
So it's an average of about twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars a year per job?
It's part of the recreation tourism. This is the proposed sign that's up on, on the screen of the facility that's being proposed and designed. The total project is to, over two point two million dollars.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
Any more questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, I know that we put this in another place, but, um, can I go ahead and get that letter of support for C Prop money at this point in time, or do I need to wait?
So, we need to vote on this, this application first, correct?
No, this is for report only.
Report only? Because it's already done, she's already taken care of everything?
Yes, 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 we did.
Okay, that's what I thought, I didn't think we, okay.
Or you want to move the C Prop?
No, if I have to amend the agenda or anything like that, I mean, I know we're reporting on this now, so this is part of, this is part of the ask that I asked to amend the agenda, just so we don't confuse everybody.
Here's the floor plan of it, as we go through it.
Here's the floor plan of it, as we go through it. This is the target area that they're looking at. Of Heart of Appalachia. Next on the county administrator is the county administrator request, this is another project, this is in the Dane area, this is, um, where we utilized A M L money, grant money again from D M M E to tire down the old R D Lee school. Talking about schools before, we tired, we actually used A M L money on this one, and they paid, this was a hundred percent grant funded, to tire this one down and convert it into a campground, so let me get to it, just a second. This is the application, um, for the Virginia Department of Health, the Office of Environmental Health Services for the R D Lee campground for the water and sewer permit. I'll need a motion to approve this, and this is the layout of the campground that will be in the Dane community area, where the R D Lee, uh, school building was, and currently where the R D Lee, uh, baseball field is.
Yes, and Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion with, uh, much pleasure, that we, um, approve the, uh, Virginia Department of Health plan as presented.
Do we have a second with this campground? All right, thank yours, any discussion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And, and if I may, not to belabor this, but to, um, clarify the school situation, uh, there was much mold, asbestos, other things in this particular school, it could not be salvaged, and we used, um, Virginia Brownsfield money to do that. Uh, in order to use a Brownsfield, uh, grant, you have to have an economic development into it, and I have inquired, um, per the request for the county administrator, on the given school and Oak Grove, I inquired to Virginia Brownsfield, and they said that they did not qualify at this time, there is a plan being put in place by, uh, Virginia Brownsfield, which comes through the Department of Environmental Quality, that could work for Oak Grove, but that's down the road, so, um, we do have that on the radar, I have made that request through D E Q, so just not to belabor anything, but I want you to do some information sharing, thank you.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Wallace. Next on county administrator reports, a request is the Virginia, uh, the V Dot Secondary Highway Six-Year Plan that was just presented at the public hearing. Of course, we have representatives, uh, you know, from the Virginia Department of Transportation here, so if they want to speak, uh, these are the changes on the six-year update, um, the draft of the six-year plan is included in the update along with the draft resolution for the plan. As the board required, no projects were added to the plan in January, remember, we had one in January. The proposed plan for the F Y twenty-two through F Y twenty-seven adds Route Eight Twenty-four, which is Walt Drive, and Route Six Seventy-One, which is Holacre Chapel Road. Route Eight Twenty-four is basically the extension of the Tombez Hollow on which Phase One of the construction is planned to begin this summer with the second, and final phase being completed in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, sorry. Holacre Chapel intersects the route of Route Fifty-Eight approximately two miles east of Alternate Fifty-Eight, and Route Seventy-One intersection, approximately one point five miles of Thomas Warner Road. Also on the, uh, notes is Route Six Fifteen, slide on Back Valley, the V Dot is assessing a slide on Route Six Fifteen and developing plan of action on it. Uh, again, this is, uh, Project Salmon, which is, uh, the Pure Salmon Project, which is Project Jonah. V Dot has reviewed the plans for the connection to Route Nineteen and the single connection to Route Six Oh Three, which is Six Oh Three was actually in Tassel County, no other plans have been submitted on the project, the proposed connection and related improvements to Route Nineteen are approved, but V Dot has yet to receive the required bond for the work and permit on Six Oh Three, interest has been issued. The Saint Paul Welcome Center, this is actually the, the residency understands our plans moving forward on the Welcome Center, that it will be, uh, in Saint Paul along Alternate Fifty-Eight, the residency looks forward to reviewing the plans of the project. This is the Three Rivers Destination Center, they called it the Saint Paul Welcome Center. The Route Nineteen Commercial Entrance Improvements, the residency is working with private developers to provide improved access at two locations on Route Nineteen, south of Alternate Fifty-Eight and Nineteen intersection, this work include improvements to turn lanes near the existing weigh station, as well as an entrance just south of the Valero Gas Station, those are the nineteen. Uh, the funding opportunities on both revenue sharing and the transportation alternative project grant, which is the tax grant applications are now being submitted, pre-applications for both programs are due by July the first, twenty twenty-one. The maintenance activities, crew, maintenance crews are actively involved in various type activities, some of the more pertinent activities are on hand, are, on hand and machine, heavy and large area patch, both for general maintenance purposes and advancing repaving activities, as well as slurry seal of the various routes in the county. That is the notes from the resident, uh, engineer, uh, at the Lebanon residency, of course, this is the notice of the public hearing, we need a motion for the approval of the resolution.
Do we have a motion to accept V Dot's, um, secondary highway six-year plan?
So moved.
Tim, all right, do we have a second?
Say.
Carl, thank you.
Discussion.
Okay.
Okay, uh, one thing I would like to say is, I know I've been hounding V Dot pretty heavily about Horton Ridge Curve, uh, you know, I know we've been working on it, and it's, to me, it's a school bus safety issue, and it's, uh, it's been there forever, and it's, it's really a danger. And then we have a lot of, uh, I know we have a lot of secondary type ditch drainage, road issues and stuff, and, uh, and then guard rail. I don't even know when we'll be able to get enough funding for, to be able to do guard rail in areas that need it, not just replacing the existing guard rail, but I know in my district, it's needed terribly, uh, in a lot of areas, so I appreciate what you guys do, and I know we work closely together and, and that, but I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of these issues, and I don't know where we're gonna get the money to be able to do everything that we need to do. I know how Richmond is, they try to pull everything they can from down here in southwest Virginia, but if there's anything we can do to fight, roll up our sleeves and go after it, I think this, I think we're all willing to do that, but we appreciate what you guys do.
All right, any other discussion, all right, all those in favor of their six-year plan?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, of course, next one up is a proclamation of the Older Americans Month, twenty twenty-one, that's all, that's applicable too, so.
Majority of.
Thank you, Lonzo.
What are you trying to say?
Finally something for me.
Well, listen to the proclamation. Whereas Russell County includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through success and difficulties. That sounds familiar, and whereas Russell County benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience, and whereas Russell County recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty, and whereas Russell County can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, encourage older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, we, the Russell County Board Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one to be Older Americans Month. We urge each, we urge every resident to recognize older adults and people who support them as essential contributions to the strength of our community. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye, anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, next is a requi- uh, request from the county administrator to advertise for the public hearing for the, uh, for the F Y twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and set the tax rates for the county, for the, uh, next public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I'll, I'll need, we'll need, we'll need to date.
Okay, um, do you all want to, um, reconvene at the end of the month, and get it, have it taken care of, and on our June board meeting, we approve the budget and go? Can we do it the end of May? May nineteenth, twentieth?
Yes, we, by the code of Virginia, we need seven days between the public hearing and approval of the budget, P I Code. That's for comments, so. So the board meeting for June is June the seventh, so.
So seven days before that.
So for us to be able to advertise it in the, in the local, uh, newspaper circulation, would go out on the eleventh, so the earliest that you could have it would be the eighteenth, nineteenth, thirtieth, twentieth.
Has anybody got prior commitments, nineteenth, twentieth? Okay, not, not the twentieth, okay, nineteenth? Is that fine? Now what, y'all wanna be here at one? Too much work, okay?
I work. Yeah, I work.
Five, five?
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay, five, on May the nineteenth, is that, what day of the week is that?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, and we'll have everything set, so, David? Wednesday, May the nineteenth at five, do we have a second with that? Ours, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, all right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the, uh, on the county minister request is the advertisement of the Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator position. Uh, on this position, the board had previously approved a full-time position, I would like for the board to rescind that motion, and, uh, for a full-time to advertise for a part-time position.
I'll make a motion, since I made it to hire, uh, full-time, I'll make a motion to rescind my motion, uh, from the last, uh, position I held, and, uh, look at doing part-time.
Say, sir.
Thank you, any further discussion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Lonzo?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I need to ask you a question, now do you need a motion to give you the authority to hire a part-time?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, sir.
That's what I thought, I'll make that motion.
Say.
Okay, David, Steve, any discussion, all right, all those in favor of hiring a part-time, uh, emergency coordinator position? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Assistant Registers Position, Registrar's Position, this was discussed in previous boards, uh, the electoral board has selected one, we need approval for the, uh, this position, cause it is a county-funded position, the salary is, is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, I need approval for that motion to go ahead and proceed for hire.
All right, anyone want to make the motion to hire her assistant?
I'll make that motion.
Ours, s- do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, all right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, next, again, is, uh, the Russell County Courthouse Custodian Position, advertisement for the courthouse, this is a replacement of, uh, from the custodian from last week, I'm asking for the board's approval for full-time, full-time custodian positions at the courthouse.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, any discussion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, next on the, uh, county minister request is the Holacres Line Club, the twenty twenty-one Holacre Independence Celebration, has asked for a donation for the fundraising for the Independent, Holacre Independence Day Celebration.
Let me ask you a question, uh, we've always gave to all the entities that did this, the Fourth of July celebrations, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
We have, I thought we did, I mean, I think if we're gonna do this, I'll make a motion, we do it for all, and give them those donations that we've done in the past, so we support them all equally.
Yes, sir.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
We need to, we need to get back to normal, so we need to support them all.
The town of Lebanon, town of Cleveland, town of Lebanon, town of Cleveland, town of Saint Paul, and town of Holacre having their festivals, yes, they're all scheduled.
I just think, I know, I appreciate, cause I know they had called me about this, having it put on the agenda, but I just feel like we need to support them all.
So what monetary amount do y'all want to put?
Did we do the last time?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah, I'll go with five hundred again, and support them all.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, and? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, last on the county minister request is the one that was added for the Cumberland Plateau Planning District C Prop, letter of support from the Board Supervisors for the, uh, C Prop application for the Three Rivers Destination Center, I need, uh, approval for a letter of support.
Support?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Move, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, David, any discussion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair, I will abstain, as I'm on the Cumberland Plateau Board and also on the C Prop Budget Committee.
So we have all eyes except for our Steve, he had to abstain, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes county administrator requests and reports.
Okay, uh, the next is air matters before the board, Tim, do you have anything?
Uh, no, ma'am.
David?
Yes, ma'am, I do, I talked to county administrator about this, about some of the facilities in our county, especially like Holacre Little League Field. I've been approached by a lot of the parents down there, and I know we have appropriations that we have held back from the board because they haven't provided us their tax return in two years of financials, over the past, I guess, five years?
Five years, yes, sir.
Five years, but they are absolutely in need of brick dust, I went down there and done a walk-through and a tour of the facilities, one little kid's got hurt because they can't even drag the field, it's in pretty, pretty much disarray. I would like to ask the board, or if I have to make a motion, that we get a, uh, a tandem load, or whatever it takes to fix these fields, they've got them down so low that there's even like glass-looking particles that's raised up out of it and rocks, and it, it's about as bad as anything I've ever seen, and, uh, I, I, you know, if I need to make a motion that, that we order a, a load so we can protect these kids, I, I wanna do that. I don't know about the other fields in the county community, but I say let's.
Are you sending brick dust to everybody?
Well, I would, because I think it's such a need.
Yes.
Second that motion.
I, I'll even, i- if I can back up, I'd like to expand it to have a, a total review of all the facilities, I mean, I mean, I'm telling you, I, I have been down toward Castlewood and stuff where my son's playing now and everything, but I, I think we need a review of the whole facilities in the area, you, you don't want our facilities to get in disarray, you know, and I've always said this, I mean, you wanna build something new, but you need to take care of what you got, first.
Who is responsible for the upkeep?
Well, the county is the one owns the fields.
Well, we own the fields, but aren't the little leagues responsible?
I've got, well, we've got an issue or a situation there that when we first got elected, we, uh, asked that anybody we give money to, that they would provide us two years of financials and one year of tax returns.
Yeah.
To keep, uh, uh, continuity there for anybody we write a check to, well, we ended up having a lot of people say, hey, we appreciate you in the past, we just don't want your money no more. Well, since then, we got a handwritten, I wrote, was it a handwritten, from New, uh, from Holacre Little League? It's just handwritten, it wasn't a tax return, and it wasn't financials, and so we just don't give people money unless, and we do this. And so we just don't give people money unless, and we do this with fire departments, rescue squads and everybody. I don't want you to think we're singling anybody out. This is just a equal way to be able to, to protect the taxpayers' money. But we have a lot of great volunteers down there and they, they've called and hounded me to death because they don't have anything to work with. If they had some stuff to work with, they'll fix them. They'll fix the fields, they'll maintain them and keep them up. And it's like that in all of our fields. You got good volunteers, they just need the product.
Well, I've had, I'm, I'm like you, David. I've had a call from Honeaker that their big John Deere lawnmower has gone. It's been gone. Somebody came and got it and it hadn't been returned. So, yeah, we need to be looking after this stuff.
We are, we are still getting those audits or tax returns from all these entities.
Yes, sir, we are. We request them every budget year. Yes, we are.
Okay.
No, I just, I, I think we need to do an evaluation of these. I mean, you know, brick dust is kind of a, I mean, I know it's not going to break us to be able to protect these children. I mean, they can't slide at home or they can't slide into bases, uh, without having the, uh, you know, to get hurt. I mean, I know I've been in Little League, Minor League all my life. I coached. And we probably kept some of the most pristine fields in the area. And it's because we had a lot of good volunteers, but you still got to have the product. If you ain't got the product, you can't fix it. So, you know, I'm going to make a motion that we do an evaluation of all the areas and if it's needed, let's get it.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, what did we do a couple of years ago, Lonzo? Didn't the schools have a big load delivered up to bus garage? And then each field came, got it as needed and?
They did, sir.
And maybe we could look at doing that same thing.
I agree with Tim. Well, the school system actually should pick up half a tad because a lot of these fields, well, if they want to buy it again, we appreciate it.
I like, they, I, they just settled it.
Thanks, Tim. Did you make that motion? No.
Well, and, and they do. And on the Glade, on the Glade Hollow Field, you know, that's, that's used by.
Well, our senior league field is used by a grade JV.
So is the senior field at Honeaker. And, and the school has volunteered to, you know, help keep the condition on that. Now, as far as the county, and we do work with the, uh, little leagues. And, you know, we've got, we've got, you've got some little leagues that are more active and you've got someone that's not. So, and, uh, we do work with them on this and we do give the annual stipend to them every year that they can use at will, how they need to do it and how they decide. We don't dictate to them. If they provide their financials and tax returns, we don't dictate to them. They, they do keep receipts, they do turn them in. They're very, they do their due diligence and they're very transparent. They, they stretch it and they, they work with the community in donations. But the, one of the things that, you know, if we're driving around, this is taking it from, you know, my staff. During the pandemic, there was no one working. So the condition has, has went down during, you know, this year elapsed. So, I mean, we can reach out to the school board and see how we can change half of these. You know, we can work on these, these ones that we partnered with before at, you know, at the board's discretion.
We need to do it before the season's up.
Well, we'll do it immediately tomorrow.
Alright, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Steve?
Yeah, I got, well, wait, I got one more thing. I'm sorry, ma'am.
You got your list up there.
I, I'm on a roll this evening. One of the thing, no, honey, you're fine. One of the things that I wanted to address and I would like to ask for the board, uh, to give us a little bit of understanding or, or to reach out to some of our rescue squad, uh, services. I have been getting calls that, you know, we, we, we give quite a bit of money to these entities every year. And I know this is going to cause a lot of heartburn in my area and everybody else's area when I bring this out, but it's, it's very critical because we fund a lot of these. We've only got two volunteer services in our county. The rest of them are what I consider paid services. They get paid and they bill people for the services they go out here and do. Now, we have some of these entities out here that operate and they bill, but they don't get any money from the county. Uh, but now I've heard here recently that some of these entities are going to cut back services and only do, perform services that, uh, they get paid to do. They're not going to do transports. They're not going to, and that's to me not meeting the needs of our people and our citizens. When you're just looking to get paid to do something and you're going to leave somebody out there that you know that has a, an incident and they don't get it picked up, I have a problem with that. And I don't care who knows it. I mean, I think that we need to have them come to us and give us a list of what services they're willing to provide for us to support them. And if we're willing to cut back and do away with and not do this, I don't think that's right in any regard. Because, you know, you have an incident where you call nine one one and all of a sudden you have to get somebody on the lower end to come up there and pick that person up? That's not acceptable to me. And I think that we need to, we need to reach out to these people and find out what, what are you, what are you going to contribute to our county? And, and I think we might have to come up with a pretty much directive of what the responsibilities are to the citizens of the county if they're going to get our money. And I'm just going to lay it out on the line because, you know, everybody's looking to get a dollar. And I understand that because you got to be able to, to do this. But we also need quality services for our citizens. And I don't want somebody to be looked at because, you know, they can't transport them because they don't get paid to transport. And I, I don't know how all that mechanism works, but I know this is really being a bother to me. I've lost sleep over it, thinking about this stuff.
I want to echo exact, in, in fact, that's, that was my comment as well, David. Because I've had calls even from private vendors that some of the squads, uh, are looking at just doing the, you know, the services that they're going to be reimbursed for. And, and if that's the case, I have a real issue with county contributing any money to them. If they're not, you know, wh- wh- where's, where's, where's the break line between a volunteer service and a company, a group that we're giving money to and they're competing with a private entity who didn't get anything? I think we just need to review that whole set of circumstances, you know? So I'd like copies of whatever the rescue squad submitted. I want to look at those. Can you give those to me, Lonzo?
I can, sir.
Okay.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to have a copy too. I'm sure the full board would probably entertain a copy of that to see how that this is working. I, I know they're governed, I think, in ways that, uh, you know, in that scope of, uh, what going through the, what's it called?
I don't know how, if they have a charter or, or how they're set at, what they're, describe what they do.
Each of the squads have a protocol. And that protocol, they, within their service area, they must maintain it. Those, those protocols define what services they are to do. They don't get a chicken shoes what services they want to deliver or not to deliver.
Who sets those protocols?
The board is, the state.
The state does?
Yes, they do. And, and the, uh.
But I mean, are, is it a mandated thing and, and how do you inspect that?
That's part of the operation plan too. They, we, we, these protocols are set in place per service area. Yes.
I remember viewing, reviewing them that first year and there were a, a couple of things that we looked at that, one of the guys must have lived at the station, you know, from the time, what they said they paid him and how, you know, what his final pay was over there. I mean, he must have literally lived there. So I think it's worth looking at that again. Maybe we've gotten a little lax on that.
That's all I have.
I had a matter of, of these houses been torn down or struck, let's just say struck. It's been kind of a little. Some of them been kind of mixed up as what structure, they get notification be tore down. And I've done, run into one or two at least that, uh, they were about to have the wrong person tie down a, a structure. When you say structure, it may, it might be a house, it may not be a house. But, uh, we need to be more careful about the notification going out by whoever that, uh, they don't get the wrong, um, structure torn down or notified to have it torn down.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
I missed one thing. Can I apologize and you? Okay. And I know Carl probably.
Ours, are you through? Are you finished?
Are you through? I'm apologizing, Ours. Are you done? Thank you, sir. Uh, something we discussed at the last meeting I brought up or in, in the meeting, uh, is something I need to, I'm, I need to make a motion to do this. Uh, as a designation for the amphitheater or the music pavilion there at, uh, Cleveland Park and since Carl's related, uh, he felt, I guess, feeling a little bit uncomfortable doing this before he's making the motion. I don't blame him. But, uh, I want to designate and name that the Rabbit Ridge Pea Pickers Music Pavilion. And, uh, look to see about getting a sign put up down there at, at the facility and actually invite the members that's still living, maybe at our next meeting, to be able to give an update or, uh, concert maybe.
Jennifer, is that within your town limits?
That's the county, right.
Is it? So we'd need to, yep, she said.
Yeah, this is over in the corner in the county property.
Okay.
They're about sixteen feet over from third base. It kind of splits down through our towards left center.
Alright, Steve, second. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'll have to abstain on that.
Luann, you have anything?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Carl?
No, Madam Chair.
Alright, I, I don't have anything. The only thing is I need a, uh, motion to reconvene on May the nineteenth at, that's a Wednesday at five o'clock.
So moved.
Okay? David and Steve, second. All in favor?